All right.
Free tickets for the meeting show downstairs.
Yeah.
Good evening and welcome to the special call, August 28, 2024, meeting of the City of Tuscaloosa Planning and Zoning Commission. This time I introduce our staff. We have Ashley Kreitz, Executive Director, Urban Planning, Zach Pons, Director of Planning, Caitlin Giles, Development Review Manager, and Jimbo Woodson, Deputy City Attorney. There are nine members of the Planning Commission, all of whom are appointed by the mayor for staggered terms, with the exception of the City Council Representative, who is appointed by the City Council. I ask that the commission members introduce themselves and state their occupation, beginning with Ms. Howard.
Councilwoman Raven Howard, City of Tuscaloosa District Two.
Katie Pugh, retired.
Tim Harrison, General Counsel.
Bill Wright, Business Owner.
There are sign up sheets outside for public comment. If you do not sign up, you will still be given an opportunity to speak during the public comment portion of the agenda. Procedures tonight, the commission will take up items in the order of the agenda. The commission will receive a presentation from staff regarding zoning text changes necessitated through testing, along with minor changes and updates to proposed zoning map that they have identified between the creation and the present day. The commission will vote to accept or reject those changes for final recommendation to the City Council later this summer. This is not the final vote on these items. The final vote is expected in October. After the staff presentation, the floor will be open to public comment. Staff will assist in reviewing the comments submitted online. Others in attendance will be welcome after online comments are reviewed. Online comments are separated into two categories, comments of support and comments of concern. Comments of support generally do not require action in terms of a vote. For comments of concern, the commission will decide whether to accept proposed changes or leave as is. Individuals wishing to express support or opposition will be given three minutes to speak. Only the Planning Commission can grant a specified time extension to an individual. Public comment will be received, the floor closed to public comment, and the commission will open discussion among themselves, preserving the opportunity to vote to accept or reject any changes for final consideration at the review meetings that will take place this year. These proceedings are video recorded and broadcast live. All public comments should be made at the podium into the microphone. Please first state your name and address for the record. Jurisdiction regarding zoning text amendments, section 11-52-76 of the Code of Alabama states, "The legislative body of such municipalities shall provide for the manner in which such regulations and restrictions and the boundaries of such districts shall be determined, established, and enforced from time to time, amended, supplemented, or changed, and may adopt such ordinance as may be necessary to carry into effect and make effective the provisions of this article." Planning and zoning commission serve as a recommending body to the legislative body. While the zoning text amendment will be considered in pieces, they will not be enforced until the full zoning text is adopted and the zoning map changes implemented. In layman's terms, if there is a vote at any point to recommend changes, they will not be enforced on any property until the City Council adopts the zoning text and zoning map changes formally through many public hearings. At this time, I would ask, do any members of the commission have any conflicts of interest or possible conflicts or any topics on tonight's agenda? If so, please state for the record. Having heard none, that we will begin. Kreitz.
Well, good evening, Commission. I cannot believe we are approaching the Labor Day weekend, and I also can't believe that Mr. Wright, you just read in that we will be voting in October. I think that's really exciting, and the end is in sight. So these last two meetings between August and September will be the time to tell your friends, tell your loved ones, tell your enemies. Pay attention to what's going on on the framework website, pay attention to the map, take a look at your properties. As we get into tonight's meeting, let's of course talk about our meeting expectations. So for those steering committee members, if you're here tonight, please, if you're speaking on the record, note your role in the process. Simply state that you were a steering committee member on record if you're providing public comment. For our Planning and Zoning Commission members, of course, you have had a chance to review those draft code articles, review the proposed map amendments ahead of time. We're just listening, asking questions of the public, and looking to have an expedited proceeding this evening. For all of us, meetings are beginning at 5:00 PM and ending at 7:00 PM. If a topic does not get finished, we are rolling it into the next scheduled meeting. I know last month, we pushed through, we had a couple extras, and we ended at about 7:15. I could see something similar happening if Mr. Wright, Mr. Harrison, anybody else desires that. We'll be utilizing a three-minute timer visible to all parties, Planning Commission staff, public. Only the Planning and Zoning Commission members will be able to grant a specified time extension. Please all, let's make sure we are paying attention to that clock. Staff is managing the flow of the meeting for efficiency, and you will see that in the order of operations when it comes to the map comments, when it comes to how we have put things together. So just really quickly, if this is your first meeting this evening, let's talk about how we got where we are between that future land use character map and the creation of the draft zoning map. So during the framework process itself, these are those numbers. We had over 40 groups represented in our listen and learn interviews between the steering committee meetings, the housing subcommittee meetings, lakes, et cetera, and our two big public meetings in November of 2018 and November of 2019, we heard from the public, and we continue to hear from the public in this process, and that's something that I am so proud of. This is not sneaking up on anyone. This isn't a surprise to anyone in our community, and for that, I'm very, very proud. Our steering committee members are there on the screen, all 30 of them. And then, so of course, the steering committee created the future land use and character map as part of the framework comprehensive plan process. We are using it not as a mandate for development or for rezoning, simply a guide, a policy guide that gets implemented through these zoning regulations and public and private investment decisions. Remembering, of course, that if you're looking now at the future land use character map, that multiple future land use types or multiple zoning types could be applied to any one future land use character type. And so you see those future land use and character map categories reflected in that map, and that has transitioned then into the creation of our zoning map. And staff is creating and has created that draft zoning map between the framework future land use character map, our existing zoning, current land uses, and our own professional judgment and expertise. Of course, we have taken care of those specific areas of the city, posted the framework website ahead of time, we've distributed via email for public comment ahead of each meeting, and we're using these special called meetings to discuss those areas, and now we are wrapping things up. So, your new zoning districts, I hope that everyone is very familiar with them at this point. Let's get into the meat of tonight. All right, so the zoning text draft. We want, we have posted the draft zoning text with all of the changes that we have talked about since the dawn of time. And so we've been able, just really quickly, to summarize those together. You saw in the January 31st meeting, some changes to SFR4, MR1, MR2, et cetera, adding material standards to your general commercial and your neighborhood commercial standards. In February, at that meeting, we took a look at group homes. We all remember, that meeting had a big, big discussion about group homes, and we said, all right, listen, those have got to be a special exception across the board so that nothing is by right when it comes to that, and we heard from the community in that regard. MR1, you saw triplexes, quadplexes, multifamily removed from the permitted use table for that zoning district. In the March meeting, of course, that was downtown, and we looked at the DP downtown perimeter height restrictions and said, gosh, seven stories is way too much. Let's knock that down to four, let's knock that down to three, south of Bryant Drive. We took a look at permitted land uses in April for your commercial districts. Buffers were a big topic in our May meeting, and we amended those buffers to reflect the current standards today, to make sure that our industrial uses, which included things like truck stops adjacent to potentially a neighborhood area, would be properly buffered. We also took a look at new definitions and added some new definitions, making sure that when we talk about alleys, motels, redevelopment, everyone knows exactly what we mean within the zoning ordinance. We updated permitted use things, specific use standards for check cashing establishments, liquor stores, tobacco and vape shops, so that we already had a list of what I'll call restricted uses, and we realized that some were missing in the grand list, and we had to make sure that they were buffering at least 1,000 feet from a school or similar use or a residential area. And then also, this body and the neighbors recommended material changes or material standards also be added to highway commercial. And so all of those things you see reflected in the zoning text. Now, that's available online and will continue to be available online, and if there are questions, suggestions, please let us know. One thing to discuss that will be going online after this meeting, we have been working with stakeholders over the course of the last few months about the lake zoning. And of course, our lakes, our lake is our water reservoir. First and foremost, it is drinking water. Recreation and development come secondary, but we also have to acknowledge what a resource, Lake Tuscaloosa, is. And so we are very lucky that during the framework process, we noticed and we said we want to see a lake commercial zone, we want to see lake multifamily continue, but there has to be something different, there has to be something special about it. And so you saw, I think it was the January of 23 meeting, we talked about the lake zoning. And we've continued these conversations in recent months, thanks to some really cool development that has happened on Lake Tuscaloosa, and saying, how do we ensure that things of this quality keep on in the current zoning? And so just a few quick changes that we've discussed with the stakeholders have been to make sure Lake Residential reads that only single-family detached dwellings are the permitted use in Lake Residential. The minimum lot size previously was 20,000 square feet. We have settled on 15,000 square feet. Your SFR1 lots will be 12,000 square feet. 15,000 allows for a bigger lot within the city limits along the lake and allows for proper buffering as well to happen. The minimum lot width stays today in R1 lot is 85 feet, and a lot of lots on Lake Tuscaloosa are 85 feet wide or more. For lake multifamily, instead of 15 dwelling units per acre, which would result if you had a one-acre lot, per se, you'd end up stacking, oh, I have to math really quickly, you'd end up stacking seven across and then having one two-story unit on the end. Why not do an even number that would allow you to stack an even number of units? I think 15 was just always used by the City of Tuscaloosa since the 1972 zoning ordinance was put in place. The minimum site acreage is two acres for all other uses. That includes actual multifamily, like your apartment buildings if someone was to build something. And then your lake frontage minimum is 150 feet, and these will be things that you will also see reflected in the subdivision regulations once we get to that point. For lake commercial, right now, there is a provision that says you can't have a lake commercial structure that's more than 5,000 gross floor area, 5,000 square feet gross floor area. With the process that we are proposing, which is utilizing an architectural review committee, so so many of the things that, between lake multifamily and lake commercial, by right zoning on the lake is cool. It also makes people a little nervous. And so utilizing an architectural review committee to just make sure that those standards are being met to the letter of the law, and then the Planning Commission reviewing those items. Planning Commission would be the final authority on architectural review committee items. Appeals would go to the Tuscaloosa City Council if any party were aggrieved. Treat it kind of like the historic buffer is what we're envisioning, but the architectural review committee would make sure that all the boxes have been checked, that the land use is correct, that the materials are correct, that the site plan meets the minimum, and then the Planning and Zoning Commission, it gets a bit of a public review in that regard. And the folks that we have talked to have said, sign us up, let's do this. So we are, we're quite pleased with this idea and utilizing the Planning and Zoning Commission in a, in a planning commission way instead of and zoning. So, Commission, do you have any questions on that?
Ashley, the Architectural Review Committee, is this, this is an appointed committee for the lake, for the lake zoning?
So we would utilize it for the lake and also our downtown. Downtown large developments would also go through this process.
So this is going to be an appointed committee, correct?
Yes, sir.
Who will appoint it?
Actually, just city staff, not utilizing outside entities, because I think that's where you could start to get into some jockeying, and well, I don't like this person, and I don't like their developments, just using staff to check those boxes.
The lake multifamily, there was a discussion of all these being brought in as a HUD?
So instead of the HUD, using the Architectural Review Committee, because it's accomplishing the same thing, instead of having someone go through the HUD process, you are taking it through an extra level of review. So.
Sounds good.
Yes, sir. Anything else on that one? Okay. So let's quickly get into the zoning map. Would you like to vote on that, I guess?
I don't know.
That's a legal question for Jimbo. Do we need to vote on this? Sorry? Won't hurt to vote. All right.
It's what you want to hear.
All right. Commission, all those in favor of these additional text amendment for the lakes area, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it.
And we will get the comprehensive text changes put online for everyone to take a look at as well. All right, let's talk about the map. There are just two map changes that we've taken, we have found ourselves as staff. The first is Brentwood Lake. This is in the Sunset Drive, Colonial Drive, northeast area, off of 25th Avenue East, near Jack Warner Parkway. There was just another neighborhood, a neighborhood lake that needed to be identified as open space instead of SFR1. And then the Western Riverwalk area on the left-hand side, well, we identified part of the river as riverfront development, and that's incorrect. It should have been open space instead. So just a small map change, as well as a couple pieces of city property at that northernmost area. So those are the proposed map changes from staff this month. Commission, if you'd like to vote on those, that would also probably not hurt.
All right. Commission, we have two revision of open space areas modifications. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
All right, Commission, we are getting into the public comment process. I know we talked a little bit about that in the introduction. Just a brief reminder, we'll be using that three-minute timer, and then all comments requiring a decision by the commission will be voted on as they are presented. And so as we get into this, we're going to give Ms. Giles a quick second. This first one, Allison Grant at 621 Queen City Avenue, was continued from the July 31st meeting. In talking with Ms. Grant yesterday and some other members of the Original City Association, Ms. Grant's not even here this evening, after she and I talked, I mentioned to her, I don't think we are quite done with this conversation. We need to go back with Mr. Sella and the rest of the Original City Association and come to you with, I think, a solution.
Is there any more information that we need to talk about? Can we just continue this?
No, sir. There's no new information. I think you can just go ahead, and I think we should continue this piece to the next month.
All right. Commission, we have the Queen City Avenue continuation from the July meeting to be continued again to the September meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
All right, the next item is, and I'll let Ms. Dede a minute ago, I'm so sorry, I got your old last name. If you'll pull up the framework map, and we will get into the public comment process. The first one will be from Lori Johns, related to 3310 Loop Road. And this is a comment of concern. I think the zoning should be neighborhood commercial, that's not correct, after discussing with Ms. Johns. She says, "My husband and I own this property. We bought it and the apartments next door at the same time in the same transaction. Because the property is zoned RMF, we have planned to build more apartments on the sizable lot. Please leave it RMF." So Ms. Johns owns, she owns this property where the dot is, as well as that property and the one next door. And staff had been, we had been looking to make sure we had property ownership all kind of tied in the same way. I'll tell you, I think this is an oversight from just on our end of things. The property adjacent to that is MR2. MR2 on this property would not be detrimental in, in my opinion. I don't know if Ms. Johns is here this evening. She is here, if you'd like to ask her any questions.
Is she in agreement with changing to MR2?
To MR2? It's a multifamily zone.
I don't think there's any need to, okay. All right, Commission, before us, we have at 3310 at Loop Road, change from to MR2 for all connected properties. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
All right, Commission, the next items are from Britt Payne and Ray Colvin from the Westerbelt Group. There's a few comments here, we're just going to get through them, and they are here this evening as well, I know I've seen them. So the first four are adjacent to Lake Tomahawk, and, oh, you've already pulled it up, I'm so sorry. This is a comment of concern, I think the zoning should be MR2, mixed residential 2. We would like for this area to be a mixed residential area for higher density use. And all four of those comments read the same. The property today is zoned SFR4, or what we're proposing it be is SFR4, but it is zoned R4 today. And on many of our, on many of our R4 properties, MR2 is actually the correct zone replacement. But they are here this evening, if you would like to ask them, MR2 would be the correct replacement, what they're asking for. Sorry.
Staff and petitioner.
They decoded a little bit.
Staff and petitioner are on the same page, is correct?
Staff and petitioner are on the same page, but I will.
Unless Mr. Payne wants to speak, I think we are in agreement with staff in this change. All right, Commission, before us, we have that MR2 request for the property at Jack Warner, Lake Tomahawk. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
All right, the next piece of property from Britt Payne and Mr. Ray Colvin is New Watermelon South of the Water Tower. So this comment says, "The proposed map has the adjoining lot to the north as commercial, and it would make sense to bring this road frontage in as well to commercial." What you see on the map there, that is Lake Residential, what it's currently identified as, they are proposing that it be Lake Commercial. Mr. Colvin and Mr. Payne are here this evening.
And same, staff and petitioner are on the same page, I've seen there are notes here saying it would be okay.
I, I do think that Lake Commercial on this piece of property, it's got some topographic challenges.
It's a hole.
It is a hole. You, you said it, Mr. Harrison, I was going to soften it and say it's got some topographic challenges. The property to the north has the water, you know, the water tower's on the tippy-top corner, and then we started to pull Lake Commercial down just because the lake master plan identifies that intersection as a commercial node.
Definitely not residential then, because it's a hole, right?
Yeah.
It's unlikely to be residential.
I want to vote for it, see if they can build something else there.
I was going to say, if anyone can build something on there, Godspeed.
More power to them.
Godspeed, yeah.
All right, unless the petitioner feels the need to speak on this, I think we're in agreement with staff that we could be okay with that change. Okay? All right, Commission, before us, we have the recommendation to change the New Watermelon South of Water Tower to LC from R1 today. R would be shown as LR, so, to LC. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
So we're going to slide down Watermelon Road just a touch and go to a piece of property I think that we're all a little bit familiar with, 7415 New Watermelon Road. There's two comments on this, it's not that one, it's that I talked to. Nope. So it's a comment of concern, "I think the zoning should be MR2, mixed residential 2 district. Recommend this parcel is MR2 because there's only one small buildable location that consists of approximately three to four acres." And then the comment on that one says basically the same thing, because the small amount of build space that is allowed due to topography. You had seen a previous comment from someone else on this portion of the map back in the January meeting, that you can still see on that dot, that was from, that was from Mr. Quarter, and they recommended that it be Lake Commercial at the time, and we recommended that it stay Lake Residential. Mr. Payne and Mr. Colvin are here this evening.
Ashley, will you outline exactly what piece? I see all the dots, but I'm not exactly sure what you're talking about.
Sure. So the piece of property, it is.
That's what I, thank you.
Yes, sir. So they are asking that it be MR2, currently shown as Lake Residential.
This one, I've got some questions on. I guess the petitioner could.
If you, Ray Colvin with Westerbelt, this is Britt Payne, if you look at that parcel, this is on the very fringe of the Lakes District, if you pulled up the topography, you would see that all of that area, that parcel, except for one location, is, is a buildable area. So this is more topography. You're talking about four to five acres out of 60 acres that is actually buildable?
It's, it's been kind of our process, I think, to, where it's questionable what could be developed on something, to wait until we could see what someone creative could propose for it, rather than change it now with the idea that we're certainly open to revisiting it for a plan that might not comply with what we're saying now. And my initial impression is that this falls into that kind of category. I don't know how the other commissioners feel, but.
This was, this was a challenged piece of property a few years ago when the developer brought up the commercial development board, and had a lot of, had a lot of opposition.
Stayed away from that, yeah.
Not to say that you can't bring it back and bring its plan, we wouldn't look at it, but.
I agree with concerns and comments, it has been a challenge, and it always gets the attention of the neighborhoods. So from that standpoint, I think I would feel more comfortable keeping it as the recommended LR until there's more definitive plan that you can show us that, again, the neighbors could have an involvement with and say it as well. So, any other questions for petitioner? Any more comments you would like?
Just, just going back to, we're. Just, just going back to, the, the, the product that will fit and the location that it fits, that, that, we're trying to get it on the front end instead of having to come back and revisit it.
I don't think it'd be a hard ask if it's the right thing, so...
Once we change it, it's open to all sorts of things, and then that's where we run into trouble.
Part of the problem is the precedent that we've set. We want to maintain the precedent going through this process. Again, you bring the right, right, right product up here, and we need it.
All right. Thank you. All right, thank you. All right, Commissioner, there's no action on this one because there's not been a, there's not going to be any changes, so we're going to leave it as LR, as it currently shows.
I think you'll still vote.
Okay, still want to vote on that? Okay, Commissioner, all those in favor of retaining that classification as LR, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Ayes have it, remains LR.
All right, we've got a comment now. This is New Watermelon North of Nickel Point at 9303. This comment says, "Comment of support. I think the zoning should be Lake Residential. This looks great." You'll love to hear it.
Yes. Next?
So we won't need a vote on that item. We will shift down south of...
He's trying to better us up for the win before we...
Listen, I, I just got excited as I was ordering things. All right, so south of Nickel Point, this is a comment of concern. "I think the zoning should be Lake Multifamily. I am recommending Lake Multifamily for this parcel. The topography is better suited for higher density." Petitioners are here this evening.
I think you're going to hear the same comments you heard a few minutes ago, so you care to make any comments? For the record?
For the record? It's just being in...
Come closer to the microphone.
Being on the front end of it, just based off topography, there's, there's only so much room you can work, there's so much green space around it. We want to address it on the front end, so we'll be on record that this is, that this will have to be a different product for us to be able to move forward, so...
And I think our, understand completely. Think our comments from the previous are still applicable. Any additional comments from the Commission? All right, Commissioner, the south, New Watermelon South of Nickle, like Nickel, Nickel Point, requests, we, we affirm that it should remain, are currently at the LR, Lake Residential. All those in favor of keeping it as LR, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Ayes have it.
All right, Commissioner, the next comment is from Grayson Glaze for the property at 3014 Fifth Street. We've moved a little south of the river at this point, south of Jack Warner Parkway. And this dot did not show up on the correct piece of property. It is actually on, and I'm drawing, Mr. Pons is a much better drawer than I am, but it is for that property outlined in pink now.
And is the perimeter of that right of way, or why is it?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Why is it an island? Okay.
Yeah, it's right of way. The right of ways in that, in that triangle are humongous. So much so, I think you'll remember, when they came and presented the town home development south of it, they also requested a right-of-way vacation, because the right of ways were so large through there. So the comment for the correct location is, "The highest and best use is not traditional," it's a comment of concern. "I think the zoning should be downtown perimeter. The highest and best use is not traditional neighborhood core. This entire block has been partitioned and all three new parcels need to be addressed separately, especially the most northern parcel that will be adjacent to the new major intersection at Third Street. While this entire process started, it was the same as the contiguous parcel across Fourth Street owned by Prime Properties. We ask that our most northern parcel, .94 acres, be changed to downtown perimeter." And so, as you'll recall, right now, as the town homes are being constructed, this entire block is the pink parcel, and then there are two to the south, so three total within that block. What they're only asking for is the one outlined in pink. I did see Mr. Glaze this evening, I know he is here, if you've got questions for him.
Mr. Glaze, any comments or might bring us some questions from Commission members?
Good evening, Commissioner. I'm Grayson Glaze, a real property specialist. I'm here representing my client, Dr. Barnett, Barnett Family Holdings LSC. They are the owner of the block. It's correct that the, the block has recently been partitioned into three, and we just feel that the northernmost part, if you look at the other surrounding parcels, we just want to conform to the higher density. Right there at Third Street, we feel like that's going to be a good area for assemblage, and really more than the traditional core. I think the potential is the downtown edge in its truest meaning, so we just want to go ahead and get, get a front of it and get it zoned to the purple, basically, which I think is called the downtown core.
Mr. Glaze, the, the request to get out ahead of it obviously is for a project?
Sir?
Is this for a project you want to do?
Yes, we're working, we are working on assemblage of ourselves, so yes, sir.
And current, the current requested classification that, that we've got now does not allow what you're wanting to be built in, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, in my opinion, I mean, it somewhat comes, and Ashley, y'all, staff making god to see here, it comes basically under the heading of what we talked about previously is, if we, if we understood what the project was, we might could do it, but not having that information now. And I don't, I don't think we're opposed to looking at it, if we understand what the project, we just don't want to boldly reclassify it without understanding. I mean, without, you'll have the process to go through on normal zoning planning.
Yes, sir. Just one point of information. Dr. Barnett's held the property for eight-plus years, and for most of this whole framework process, it was, it was zoned downtown edge for all the time, except the last, kind of very end, it got changed. And we're not sure exactly what happened, but it was downtown edge the entire time. I've got the drawing from December of 2019, so we've been working under downtown edge for basically three-fourths of this holding period, which has been eight years.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sure that's challenging, and I'm glad you brought it to our attention, but I think we had neighborhood concerns that arose about what might actually be there. Is that right, Phil, Tim?
Yeah.
That we had these, that the neighborhood raised concerns about what might go there, and we reconsidered until we had an idea of what might fit there, and...
We've, we've had a pretty good track record of contentious, contentious projects in that area.
Kind of have their fears at rest when they saw that what was going up was something they could live with.
Great.
That's my best explanation, and I don't know, that's very helpful, but...
I, I think, based on, we'd like, we've had some contentious projects in this area that we've turned down, and there's, this, this is a sensitive area, and we want to make sure that we get it right.
Yes, sir.
It's kind of what we need. I mean, if you bring a good project forward, I think we're, I think we're open on it.
We definitely want to see the redevelopment in that area, and this is, I mean, even if it's under construction now, is a good improvement and a, a good thing for the areas. It can only help activate the other areas, hopefully including what you're talking about here. But I think what you're hearing is, is that, like we said with the Westervelt property, that until there's a definitive plan, we would, we would catch the wrath from the neighbors that we made a change without their knowledge. So I think that's going to be kind of where we're going to land on this one, very similar to what you've heard so far. We're not opposed to anything, but we just kind of have a comfort level with those neighbors and the surrounding area, so...
And make sure that they understand that this is being challenged and changed and all of that, because otherwise, they're in the dark.
Thank you very much. Ashley, Zach, and Caitlin, they did a phenomenal job, so...
Thank you very much.
Sounds like we'll see you again.
So, Commissioner, we have a request to rechange the zoning to DP. This body seems to feel like we should retain it at its current zoning moving forward. So all those in favor of keeping it as is, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Ayes have it.
All right, Commissioner, the next comment is on 1511, 1519, well, two comments on 1511 and 1519 Fifth Avenue from Linda Parsons. We will get there on the map. So these properties will be a little bit familiar. We talked about them last month. So the first comment is on 1511 Fifth Avenue. It's a comment of concern. "I think the zoning should be general commercial, that's not correct." It says, "The comment is, 'This is not in compliance with the future land use plan for the Forest Lake neighborhood. The proposed commercial zoning should be reserved for the perimeter of this neighborhood. This represents zoning creep.'" And we'll go to the comment for 1519 as well, since it's in the same area, same properties. Also, comment of concern, "It's not in compliance with the future land use plan for the Forest Lake neighborhood. Proposed commercial zoning should be reserved for the perimeter of the neighborhood. This represents zoning creep." Ms. Parsons is here this evening. I believe I've seen the property owners as well. So, Commissioner, I will turn that over to you, unless you have any questions for me.
Ma'am, Ms. Parsons?
I'm Linda Parsons, 2 Forest Lake Drive, and I'm here in my capacity as the president of the Neighborhood Association, representing the, the views of the entire neighborhood. The, one of the rationales for making the change that I understand was approved last time, is that there was recently a rezoning similar to this on Third Avenue, two blocks away. When that property was rezoned, the rationale was, well, the property next door, which is just behind a business on 15th Street, has business zoning. The business that has been zoned commercially for some time on Third Avenue, right behind the gas station, is currently being used, which is not in compliance with the zoning, but being used as a residential property. And we brought that up with the other Third Avenue petition as well. And so that was rezoned, or I think it's pending, and then this is requesting that. And our concern is, the land use plan says, "Encourage neighborhood scale commercial centers located at the edges of a neighborhood." So I guess we're here to quibble about what an edge is. Our thinking was, you've got businesses on 15th Street, perhaps on Hargrove, perhaps on Hackberry, and as you come into the neighborhood, you start to have residential. And what we're seeing is requests just keep getting further and further into the neighborhood, and that is our concern. And every, and we told the petitioner on Third Avenue, if this is rezoned, somebody else is going to ask for something, and here I am within a month of that happening. So that is the, is the basis for our concern. The residents who live in the neighborhood are not in favor of and oppose the creep of the commercial into the neighborhood. We think it's not in compliance with the zoning guidance that's been provided.
Any questions for Ms. Parsons? Did I hear you say, Ms. Christ, that the original petitioners are here as well? Why don't we, I guess, allow them the opportunity to respond or make their comments as well, so...
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's good to be back with you on the eve of the holiday here for two months in a row.
Name and address the record, please. Name and address the record.
I guess first I would...
Name and address for the record?
My name is David Furman, I'm sorry, and I live at 1230 Crown Point Boulevard in Tuscaloosa. And my family owns a significant number of properties in this neighborhood, obviously, and we manage others, so when the Neighborhood Association says the neighborhood owners are against it, I, I'm for it. So I'm not against it, and I'll be glad to address any questions that you have relative to where we are, and then I'll be glad to rebut also.
I guess it's kind of tricky here. We, we saw you last month, and we rezoned it for you.
Right.
And that's in, in the legal world, if you're heading to council, correct?
And I would point out to you, these two properties, they are directly behind the busiest Domino's Pizza in town. Now, Zan at Domino's has about eight parks. On Friday and Saturday night, if you go over there, it's like kicking a fire ant's nest. He has eight employees inside or more, he has 30 drivers, and they run a $7.99 coupon where you can get a large pizza if you pick it up. If you order it to be delivered, it's $24. So we have vast, I mean, it's already a commercial use, right? The property, I mean, the alley that we sit on that joins them is so busy, the city made it a one-way street. It's the only one-way street in here. It's because, and you just rezoned across from the alley, the lot that was residential, now it's commercial, so that Starbucks, a Starbucks developer, could have Starbucks. So my property adjoins a drive-through Starbucks and a Domino's Pizza, and it in no way interferes with the community, the nature of the neighborhood, because the nature of the neighborhood is already, as I said, a fire ant's nest on Friday and Saturday nights. It just makes sense that these lots along the busiest or second busiest, I guess, commercial quarter in Tuscaloosa ultimately become commercial, and we've offered two buffer lots there on 16th Street that you brought up. So I'll be glad to address whatever we need here. This is not zoning creep, this is just recognizing the reality of what exists there. If you want to talk about zoning creep, the note here says that they've reported the poor guy at 1510 Third Avenue for renting his former hearing aid shop he closed after he retired to a resident. Well, that's residential creep in a commercial zone. So we're not being very logical here, we're just being against everything. And that's my take, so I answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions for petitioner? Thank you. I'm of the mindset, we've already, we had a full commission meeting on this, we recommended the rezoning. I kind of feel like that's where we are.
We gave a lot of time and thought to the decision.
I agree.
I'm in agreement with you.
So am I hearing any, any desire to change what we've already done? I hear none. So, that being said, Commissioner, we were asked by the petitioner to change the zoning back, but we've already made a zoning change in the last month's meeting. So all those in favor retaining the zone that it's in the process of being rezoned, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed?
Aye.
Say here, aye. I heard, I got, I got four ayes, right?
This is in my district, and I hear the concerns of the neighborhood, and I know that we did follow the recommendation of staff, I think, last month or at our last meeting. So there are a lot of issues. I just want to say that I, I am in favor of leaving it as it's zoned, as we have already decided. But there are a lot of issues in this area, so I am concerned about zoning creep. But in this particular area, with the one-way street and with the traffic coming from Domino's and the new development of Starbucks, there's just a lot that has to be taken into consideration.
And I'll just say, the reason I voted to change it was, I think it is easing into the neighborhood. You get this lots, and then you get the next two, and then the people across the street don't want to live there because you got business and... don't want to live there because you got business. In a way, it starts eroding the neighborhood, and this is a buffer zone to me, and I'm all into buffer zones.
I'm definitely into buffer zones, too. I just want us to be mindful of what's coming as far as businesses. I don't want anything else to start encroaching on the neighborhoods further than this. But we are already at a point where we need to be protective of the neighborhood, but also make sure that we are making the best choices for the businesses that already exist there, because it is an issue. And I remember those comments. I went back to the meeting, the meeting comments from our last discussion, and so those were some comments that the traffic in this area, coming down that one-way alley, coming off of 15th Street, is just an issue already.
I would just say that...
It's not a desirable place for someone to spend four, $500,000 to build a residential property, and then have to cope with the traffic from Domino's and Starbucks. And it's not, it just, if you look along that street, it's just a commercial quarter, and this needs to be resolved. And it's very difficult for commercial to develop properly when there's less than 150 feet of depth.
Exactly.
That's why Starbucks is probably putting a drive-through-only deal, because they needed more to develop.
It's a challenge, I know, for the neighborhood. However, we are seeing dramatic improvement in the caliber and quality of the commercial development along that road. And it's, we're replacing an old Starbucks with a tire chain shop.
And the revenue generation from that, for property taxes, sales taxes, whatever rental taxes for the city, will be enormous in comparison to what is being generated there now. And it's not an eyesore, and if you lived on 16th Street there, you'd much rather have a Starbucks you could walk to than a tire store where you're afraid you'd get mugged.
Thank you, sir.
It's a quality of life improvement for that neighborhood.
All right, so, we had, I got a question. We've never had a five-person committee. We've had four ayes. I'm not sure where I, you're a aye?
Yes.
Okay, so we have five ayes. Okay, thank you. Any ayes?
You had four.
Okay, that's fine. All right.
I got track of what you guys, what you all did. Don't worry. You had four ayes to keep as general commercial and one aye opposed. Yes, sir. Okay. Next comment is in the Fernwood area. These are also from Linda Parsons. There's a number of dots on the side of the street, and we'll pull those up really quickly and read them in. All right, so this is number 33 Fernwood. This is a comment of concern. "It is not in compliance with the future land use plan for Forest Lake neighborhood. Too much density to be located next to the school, and it changes the character of the surrounding area." The next one is for 27 Fernwood. "Is not in compliance with the future land use plan for the Forest Lake neighborhood. Too much density to be located next to the school and changes the character of the surrounding area." This one is the same comment on 23 Fernwood. The same comment on 19 Fernwood. The same comment on 17 Fernwood. Also, same comment, but on 115 19th Street East, "Is not in compliance with the future land use plan for the Forest Lake neighborhood. Proposed density changes the character of the surrounding area." That same comment is on 1902 Forest Lake Drive, as well as 1934 Forest Lake Drive. Ms. Parsons is here. The property owners are as well. Any questions?
Ashley, can you remind me about, it seems like there were some questions about the size of these lots and what could be developed there?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you just refresh?
Yeah, let me, we're getting the Wayback Machine from last month. So, the last month, the petition, or the property owner brought up concerns regarding the depth of the lot and what could be developed if it were to be zoned SFR four, or SFR one instead of SFR four. The lots are at all at least 9,000 square feet. And so, and there's no minimum depth requirement, for sure, but there are minimum front yard requirements. And so, that...
Logistically, it made it very difficult.
That was the, that was what the petitioners were saying. Yes, ma'am. And so, that is why I believe the Commission, and we actually, we missed one on the map, just bringing that up. This one here was part of the conversation from last month, and when I sent it to our GIS team, I forgot one. So, it's that stretch across Fernwood that we're discussing in these comments. So, any questions for me?
Ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Parsons?
Once again, Linda Parsons, two Forest Lake Drive, very, very near, much of that property, representing the Neighborhood Association and speaking on behalf of, I'll be more precise in my wording, the resident owners, who are opposed to this increased density. The neighborhood core, traditional neighborhood core that is recommended, says that for zoning guidance, they support more intense residential infill and redevelopment adjacent to commercial and mixed-use centers. So, we're not quibbling now. This is right in the center of the neighborhood. And I did see that the concerns of the petitioner last week, and I, we were unaware that this was going on, so unlike the property there off of Melcain, apparently, no one asked how did the neighbors feel in this particular one. So, anyway, that the setbacks were going to be difficult to reach, that there would be excessive front yard or on-street parking very near a school. On the first one, there are many properties that don't allow the variances to be met within the zoning because of problems topographically, et cetera. And so, variances could be used here to deal with the setbacks in the front and backyard. We have seen excessive front yard parking and on-street parking, and that is almost always because there is non-compliance with the limits on the number of unrelated parties. So, when there is a house that has fewer than, three or fewer unrelated parties, we typically do not see problems with front yard parking or excessive on-street parking. So, we would encourage the zoning to stay as it was before it was approved last month for a change, to maintain compliance with the leasing requirements, and because it is next to a school, if there's concern about being, having parking on both sides of the street, we recommend a yellow curb that disallows parking on one side so that it does continue to be open. Another issue that was raised by the petitioner, the landowner, is that there would be an ability to use alley parking that would access all of these properties. Well, I walked over as soon as I read this, and that alley would dump out in front of the school, right in the pickup and drop-off entrance. So, I know there aren't a lot of students out in the morning at drop-off time, but in the afternoon pickup time, this could be very problematic. If you took every lot along Fernwood and East 19th and had a rear entrance, and all of them came out on First Avenue, they would come out right in the entrance to the school, where the buses and the parents and so far are. So, we think there are other solutions that can address some of the shortcomings or concerns with these properties without adding a new density of housing that's supposed to be reserved more for the edges or the perimeters and away from the center of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Let's come back up, Mr. Furman.
David Furman, 1230 Crown Point Boulevard. And I'm here to answer your questions again and to try to be responsive to what the Neighborhood Association has said here. I would point out that we are not married to having a entrance and exit from the rear parking area that could be built here on First Avenue. That single way in and out could be lined up with Lake Avenue there, if that made more sense. In my opinion, having two exits is better than one, but if that's what the city chooses, fine. And we're not looking for high density here. What we're looking for is practical use. And if you look across there and all the dark yellow on that map, this is right in line with it. We're asking for smaller lots, basically, and if you have a smaller lot, you build a smaller house. But you pull it right up on the street, and there's no parking in the front yard and on the street. I don't care if the city paints the curb yellow, and there is no street parking. We would provide the parking in the rear, which would be safer. I have been to Forest Lake Neighborhood Associations where one of the members excoriated the city because cars were parking on 19th Street East, and you couldn't get safety vehicles in and out. If you go over to Fernwood Court, where all the houses are basically R1, except, and they're all student rental except one, every one of those will have cars parked in the front yard and on the streets, and you can't get an emergency vehicle down there. Go over there Friday night. I know, we live here, we see this. So, what we're trying to do is say, hey, we'll have a little bit smaller lots, we can pull with the zoning that we have here, the houses right up on the street. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ashley, I think your front porch and steps can even get into the city's property a little bit there, under that zoning. Creating parking off the street, behind the house, nice, smaller houses, because you've got smaller lots. And the Neighborhood Association's wrong. I'm in this business for 20 years. If you have three bedrooms on Friday and Saturday night, you're not going to have three cars. You're going to have some partying going on, people coming over, whatever, visiting, and you're not going to believe this, sometimes they have sleepovers, and you have six cars. And so, it's just part of the deal. We're offering something here that will improve the neighborhood. We've got more invested probably than anybody in this neighborhood. We don't want it to go down. We don't want it to look bad. We don't want there to be safety issues with a fire truck that can't get from one side to the other. There's only one street that goes between 15th Street and Hargrove Road. There's only one street that connects the west and east sides of Forest Lake, and it's this street right here. And if you have cars parked all up and down, and a fire truck can't get through there, and you will have that on Friday night. We try as hard as we can to prevent that, but you can't be there all the time. So, I'll take any questions you have, but we think this would be an improvement and very little increase in the total density, maybe a few lots, because you would make smaller three-bedroom, two-bedroom houses, which you'd have parking, which is the key.
Have you two parties gotten together recently about, I mean, I'm hearing, I'm hearing concern, I'm hearing, trying to find solutions. My question is, have Forest Lake Community and yourself talked about this right here recently, like the last 30 days?
Nope.
I mean...
And I've been doing, I don't mean to interrupt you, Bill, but, you know, I figured that might come up. The Forest Lake Neighborhood Association is basically the Parsons, Joe Patrick, and Gary Limroth, who live on the lake. Now, they're the board, I mean, there may be a few other people there, but this is almost all student rental. And like, if you look up on that map on Lake Avenue, there's a house there called 1718 Lake Avenue. It's owned by a guy named Tom Haygood, and he had some mental problems. He had an old junk Mustang in his front yard on Lake Avenue and a blue tarp over it. He had five or six building permits that he never finished. His house just was a hovel, and I had the house on each side of him, and he built an accessory structure behind it. The accessory structure was two stories tall, slab, block, great construction, cost $100 something thousand dollars to build. It was a footing and a half or two feet too high. Didn't meet code. Well, he wouldn't do anything about it. I had the opportunity to buy it. I called the member of the board, said, hey, I'm going to buy this, I'll fix it up. I'd like to make this, oh, yeah, yeah, that's great. They fought me on the variances, they fought me on the zoning, they fought me all the way on every bit of it. So, no, I don't need to meet with them, because there's only three or four of them. They don't represent the whole neighborhood, and they're bullies. So, no, I don't need to meet with them. I'm trying to do something that will make this a better neighborhood for everybody. And they just don't want me to do it, like, they don't want the hearing aid guy to rent a commercial house to somebody that's not a commercial business. He's just trying to make a living. They're against...
I think we're getting a little far afield.
Yeah, my bad, but no, I understand, but I, my point is, I'm through meeting, I'm not an unreasonable guy. I took Ms. Limroth's call, or we did, last Friday night, and got the boys on Lake Avenue to be quiet, partying in their own garage. I cut every yard. I cut the city's yards in front of my houses. I'm a good citizen, and either we get this or we don't. I don't know, but I don't need to meet with people who are just going to bully me.
Well, I was just trying to...
No, I understand what you're trying to do.
I just heard, because I heard the concern about like the alley dumping in there towards the school, which we got, we're talking about health, safety, welfare.
Again, we would be glad to make that a one-way out, coming out on Lake Avenue.
And that's just kind of where I'm going with that question or comment.
I can't do the alley under the R1 zoning, or the RF1. You can't do the alley. You're talking about putting an alley behind there? You can't do that on the RF1 zoning, because there's not enough set by.
Well, could we not get a variance for the set?
Oh, yeah. Well, that, but they will show up and fight me on the variance. I've been, I've been down this road. They fight me on every variance, everything you want to do, even if it's improving the neighborhood. So, now, I don't want to meet on it, not, I would meet with anybody that was reasonable, but it's just not a reasonable meeting. I've been down that road too many times, Bill.
Well, I would just like to say, this is also in my district, and I am very familiar with the Neighborhood Association and their concerns with student housing, with all of their concerns in the area. And so, one of my main concerns is about density in this area. We also have University Elementary. We have the elementary school there in the mornings, but especially in the afternoons, it creates its own traffic issues and problems. So, I wish there can be some meeting of the minds between, between you, Mr. Furman, and the Neighborhood Association, so that I can feel comfortable about going forward, because I want the residents to feel supported and protected with the properties that they own there.
Well, again, I think the safety would be enhanced by not having cars parked on the street. I know it would. I know it would. And that's what we're talking about here. The ability to build small houses here where the parking is behind the housing, not on the street, and you have a safety issue that goes away on that street. It is a narrow street, and as I said, Fernwood Court is a perfect example, one block over. Fortunately, it dead-ends, and, you know, maybe that's a little bit helpful, but this is an important street because it connects both sides of the neighborhood. I don't want to appear unreasonable, but I think I've tried enough, you know? I want to do the right thing here, and I'd like to ask you to consider...
I'm not certain that kicking it to the ZBA to approve variances is really the right, the right choice.
I've been defeated there when the variance made a lot of sense, but you have no right to a variance by law, right?
Right.
They can't guarantee me a variance.
In terms of that solution, I find that sort of not ideal.
Thank you, Ms. Hornsby. I agree with you 100%.
I personally like the alley behind the house, and I think Mr. Gardner, our city engineer, is going to study this, and he's not going to let you dump the traffic out at University Place.
Absolutely.
I think he would dump it out on Lake Avenue or somewhere else.
Absolutely. We have no interest in that.
I feel like Mr. Gardner would, is going to make it the safest it can be. As far as behind the house, it looks to me like with that 19th Street being as narrow as it is, it is, that whole area is a problem as far as trying to get through with fire equipment and things like that.
It very much is, and as I said, I was at a meeting years ago where Mr. Joe Patrick, who's on their board, really let the city have it by reason, what we're talking about.
Hey, just to respect...
So, I'm offering a solution.
Respect the timer, I think. It's been, it's been over three minutes.
So, you know, from my standpoint, I mean, we studied, I felt good about what we voted for at our, at our last meeting. I'm fine with where we were at, and I thought, I was under pressure in what we were doing here. Still feel like it was betterment, even though it could potentially be smaller. Residence is betterment of the community, so I'm fine with where we were at.
Okay. Any other comments from the Commission members? I mean, I think I agree, Mr. Harris. I do, I do like the idea that there is an alleyway behind. I do like the conversation about dumping on the lake, just to keep it out of the school. I mean, that's, that's the one that got me a little heartburn, was the fact that it would dump, could potentially dump on the school, but you've heard that issue, so maybe you'll find a solution. Any other comments from the Commission? Okay. Mission, we had changed that to SFR four last month. So, I will word it this way. All those in favor of keeping it as SFR four? So I will word it this way, all those in favor of keeping it as SFR4, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
So, four to one.
All right, commission, and we said it was a, that was a four to one, correct? Just keeping tabs on things. All right, the next comment this evening is from Bill McGuire on 1219 Thirteenth Street. We'll get that pulled up on the map. Uh, and so we are, we are in the downtown, the university area for this piece of property. Uh, it's a comment of concern. I think the zoning should be SFR4, Single Family Residential 4 District. Says, "Based on the surrounding density in this area, it would make sense to allow this property to be rezoned to SFR4. The property immediately to the west is currently zoned R4. There will be no parking issues since the site has a rear alley resulting in hidden parking." Mr. McGuire is here this evening, do you have any questions for staff?
Ma'am.
Is that lot empty?
No, it is not empty.
Okay, and I can't tell from the...
I was gonna say, I couldn't remember off the top of my head either. I think the dot is perfectly on top of the...
Exactly.
All right.
Perfect.
Mr. McGuire?
Bill McGuire, 3519 Acorn Avenue. I, I, I guess I could read that verbatim because that's, that's exactly how I feel. Property west is currently zoned, one of the four designations, I guess, R4 today. Uh, property to the east is R3. We got an alley in the back, so it shouldn't be a parking issue, uh, just like to see R4.
So what is the problem that's being presented? What are you trying to remedy?
Just, just more, more density on the lot. Parking's always, I, I was chairman of the ZBA for a long, long time, and our issues were always parking and traffic. And so, with the alley, parking is not an issue. The property on the west has, I believe it has some on-street parking that they were able to use.
So you're talking about redeveloping this lot, and I'm with a more dense...
I'm sorry?
You're talking about redeveloping this with a more, and, and you want something that would permit more density?
Yes, yes.
So, Mr. McGuire, you, I'm reading the notes here, the property, it came before St. Marsh and this was withdrawn, to go from R3 to an R4.
I didn't understand you, Tim, I'm sorry. I didn't understand you, I'm sorry.
I said in Mar, I think in March it came, of course, um, from, to be rezoned from an R3 to an R4, so you had something working at that point in time, and I guess it got pulled, is that correct?
Maybe that was the previous owner?
I don't know.
I don't know.
If you're asking about the history, if this is feeling...
Yeah, yeah.
If this is feeling familiar to y'all, um, there was, and I was, I was doing planning commission, so you know it's been a long time, um, that was back, I think, in 2016, and the previous, a previous owner, a previous prospective owner, um, was looking to rezone that property to R4. Um, they tried a couple times, the first time they withdrew it, the second time the planning commission, um, did not recommend the rezoning to R4, and then they just didn't proceed forward to the planning and zoning, or, I'm sorry, to city council with that request. If that's why that was familiar.
So, I, yeah, I'm confused. So I know in 2000, there was a case on it in 2016, but was there another case on it in previous March?
No, sir.
The March of 2016?
Yes.
Well, obviously, if it was denied, if it was denied back then, there was some rationale reason for doing that.
Yeah, next time leave off March, just say 2016.
That's quite a memory.
I thought it was twice, okay, all right.
I mean, I, I think, just based on the facts of, of those cases, whether it be 16 or March, whatever it was, we had a reason for not approving it then. So I don't see what would have changed now without, and there we actually saw something. In this case, we don't see anything.
My question for Ashley would be, is the property to the west of this, was it zoned R4 at that time, or was it zoned R3?
Oh, you're asking me questions?
I think that's...
The property to the west did get rezoned from R3 to R4, it's in the historic buffer. I don't remember what year that rezoning happened, I wanna, I think it was before me because I know that was built before I got here. I wanna say that was probably in 11 or 12, um, where it rezoned from R3 buffer to R4 buffer.
That's the hash to the left?
Yes, sir, that's...
So, Mr. McGuire, here's, here's what I, my, kinda where we've been, I, it, it logically could, could, could be approved as an R4 if we, again, understood what, what was going on there. It, not, not taking a free swing at it and not understanding what you're gonna do.
Right.
You know, we'd like to see a project there, and you just have to go through the whole process. Kinda like what we've done with what we were doing with Westfield also.
Mr. Chairman, the answer to your question is, the difference is, that's R4 now, so we're adjacent to an R4. Back then, it was an R3 and it was a satellite. Um, and, and Tim, to your, Mr. Harrison, to your point, sorry, being respectful, brother. It, it's simply, it's probably, I think, I know the height restrictions, uh, I think are 35 or 37 feet, so probably three stories, three units, probably nine total, total units on there, parking in the back. You know, not, not, nothing secret about it, it's just moving forward, I guess. You got the big density there on the west side, um, you know, it may not be in our lifetime, but it's going, it's going east and...
I think, I think that one worked a little different because of, uh, the Fourteenth Avenue.
On the on-street parking.
Just because it had, you know, you got, you really got two front streets there, you got Fourteenth and you got Thirteenth.
And they got, they got a lot more density than we would have too, so. Um, I think that lot's 75 feet, most of the other ones are 50. Probably just from an engineering standpoint, probably could get more density than that because they don't even wanna allow it, so that's kinda where we're capped and, um...
Any more questions, or any questions? All right, I, I, I think we've set a good precedent tonight about not rezoning without, or changing a zoning without some kind of clarification or solid plan and moving forward. Is that kinda the...
Mr. Chairman, well, may I ask what's, what's not clear, what, what...
Well, it's not, we, we don't have a, you're asking for a classification change, but we don't know what would go there. And I think that's, we, we've kinda stuck to our guns on, we wanna kinda know what's gonna happen. If you brought us a plan, we can at least entertain and, and look at it.
An actual plan with a driveway...
Yeah, showing us...
Parking lot numbers and all that.
I, I think Ms. Kreik could speak to the, I mean, there are limitations to what we can do, can't do anything more than what that would allow, and that would be three stories, three bedrooms per level, got adequate room for parking, got rear loading, um, I mean, I don't have it on paper, I, I'll acknowledge that. But to go to, been in your shoes many times, to, to, for, you know, to ask somebody to go back and do drawings and engineering, whatever, and then come up here and be denied, it's kinda unfair to them. So that's why I'm trying to, I'm pushing the issue a little bit, maybe further than I should, but Ms. Kreik can, can, can tell you what the limitations are, and it won't be any worse than that.
I think for me, I, I would like to be able to see the, the specifications of what you're actually going to put, be, what, will, I'm sorry, it's been a long day. I would like to see the specifications of what could actually go there, and I think the surrounding residents or neighbors or owners would also, um, would like to see that also. So, before we just rezonate for something and, and not knowing exactly what would go there, I think I would like to see that first, so to see the renderings and the building materials and all of that. I think that's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, my, my thoughts from what planning and zoning kind of relates to us on what they feel about the project goes a long way also. They're professionals at this, and when they advise us on, or advise me on something, it goes a long ways. And what a lot of people don't understand, I know you do, is when we rezone something, we can't go back and say, "Oh, we screwed up." It's rezoned.
I can appreciate that.
So when I vote to rezone something, I wanna kinda know for sure as much as possible what's going on.
All the details.
Okay. Um, I, as I said, I've been up there many times, and we've had staff, all the staff advise us on, not so much what, what we should do, but what are, what's the laws, what's the rules and regulations, you know? Like, I was chairman of the ZBA when the tornado came through, and we were tasked with how to, how to make the transition and rezone all the properties that had been damaged or whatever. And we were, we were really, really pushed on, you know, there's gonna be all kind of people coming up here, got a blank slate now, lots in Lake Forest or Forest Lake. Clean slate, this lady wants to build back her house that her and her husband built 50 something years ago, she wanted to build it back exactly the same footprint. Sounded great to me. Problem was, was that many setbacks had changed and she couldn't do it, and that lady cried and talked ugly to every one of us on the way out the door.
I recall those days, thank you. All right, uh, commission, I think I heard of kind of a common theme among the commissioners, um, that we feel like that the SFR3 zoning isn't correct, if the petitioner liked to bring us an SFR4 application, we, we weren't happy to entertain it. Everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay, commission, we have staff, and our recommendation to retain the property is SFR3, all those in there say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
All right, commission, I think we've got two more comments on the map that we, we identified before we came down to the meeting. Of course, when we wrap up, we'll run through the list, see if there's anything new that's been added. Uh, this one is from David Morrow at 2301 14th Avenue. Uh, and the comment is, um, a comment of concern. "We want to request changing this property to MR1 to give more opportunity for townhouse, multifamily development in this area. The property is adjacent to an existing MR1 community, and this parcel being of similar shape and location seems like a good fit for the expansion of that zoning district. It would also be similar to that parcel in the bordering tracks that would both, they would both share. This change wouldn't seem to create anything unusual in the area by any standards, this would bring positive development opportunity to the area that fits the general mix of uses here." Mr. Morrow is here this evening, do you have any questions for me?
Ma'am.
Yeah, I'm, I own the adjoining property, which is right there at New Terrace, so it's just a redevelopment area.
I'm sorry, name and address?
What's that?
Name and address for the...
Yeah, David Morrow, 1214 Indian Hills.
Just following up. Go ahead.
Okay, sorry about that. So, uh, I'm just kinda putting it out there, you know, we, we haven't really worked, we just think it'd be good in the future. I mean, if you guys don't do it right now, we understand, but it fits, you know, it's kinda right there, right adjoining to it, so, uh, it kinda just makes sense, the whole area's in a kind of a redevelopment area, uh, and eventually that's gonna, you know, kinda grow in that area, so, uh...
Is that the old Tuscaloosa Riding Club or whatever?
I think it is, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We've heard a common theme tonight, having Mr. Morrow.
Yeah, I've heard the theme, and, and I've already, I've already got my son up here and I tell him the, the theme is, we know what the theme is.
There's, there's precedent and there's common themes and kinda stuck with them tonight.
We got this common thing, but at least we kinda like throw it out there for, you know...
I don't, I don't, I don't think him I would disagree.
Yeah.
I think you just gotta come to us and...
Bring us a plan that makes sense.
Yeah.
We got it.
Mr. Morrow, send your son up on the next one.
Yeah, I, I am, 'cause he, I'm gonna throw him in the fire, you know, everybody gets thrown in the fire. I'll be up here one more time, I hope.
Send him up next time, we'll do the same thing to him. All right, commission, uh, you heard Mr. Morrow's request, but again, playing with our common theme tonight, I think it's safe to say that we would, uh...
I think it's a great idea, but I think you need, we need to take a look at it.
Need to see it, so. All those in retaining current zoning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it.
All righty. The last comment this evening is on McRice Ferry Road, south of Oak Chase, also from David Morrow. Uh, and this is Mr. Quarter's comment, uh, this one is Mr. Morrow's. So, uh, "I think the zoning should be SFR2, Single Family Residential District, that's what it is today. Um, the comment actually says, 'We want to request that this parcel change to MR1 in comparison to the tract just under a half mile up New Watermelon Road on the east side of the road that is going to MR1. And this parcel is similar in that they both are bordering SFR1, so neighborhoods on one side and unzoned property on the other. This type of develop, uh, type of zoning can also provide more variety of residential uses to the area, and with the new bridge going in on McRice Ferry Road, this seems like it would be a compatible use in this area without any of the potential uses adding a significant traffic burden or negative. There is good potential for more development in this area, and MR1 is a more encompassing district to accomplish this.'" Any questions for me?
This was the one that Mr. Quarter and Mr. Henry were trying to rezone everybody else's property in Tuscaloosa.
They were trying to rezone, yes, sir.
But didn't we have, didn't we have that? Didn't somebody bring this petition?
Yeah, we can, I mean, we can click on the other two comments.
No, I'm just saying, I thought somebody one time...
Al, Al, who just brought us some, some, another piece.
Yeah, somebody brought something from that.
Who's it? Al.
Maybe a little, maybe to the west?
I can't remember. Anyway, all right, Mr. Morrow, which one, all right.
But I think he was suggesting commercial space.
Wasn't it?
Yeah.
It's, uh, Samuel Morrow, 1214 Indian Hills Drive. Um, yeah, we just think this property's a, a good opportunity for the area to bring a new product, residential product type. Um, there's not many townhouse opportunities in the area, and that's what we're, we would like to bring to the area, you know, opportunity for young professional families or old, uh, retired couples looking to downsize, just a difference in, just a different type of housing in the area. Uh, um, you know, with the new bridge going in, we don't think the traffic will be much of a problem there. And, uh, we wouldn't be the first one to break in with the MR1 zoning in the area, although it is a rare occurrence up there, but we wouldn't be the first parcel to do it. So that's what we think would be a, a good product for the, for the area up there, North River area.
Mr. Morrow, did you learn anything tonight by what you've heard from us?
Bring some plans.
Bring some plans.
You know, I almost want, I almost wanna change tradition, you did a great presentation there, young man.
Let me, let me warn you something, whenever you bring the plan, that little neighborhood called Oak Chase above you will be in your ear. So if you're gonna, if you're gonna do it, you gotta get with them and get them on board too, before you get us on board, because that will make your life a lot easier, so. We always advise, uh, petitioners, talk to the neighbors, get, hear their concerns, address them, and hopefully you can come to a meeting of the minds and you can go forward.
Pretty good salesmanship.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You just like... Well, you, you know, you had a lot of nerve to come on up after, after your day.
You like it, Mr. Harrison, because it's retirement homes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm getting close.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Morrow. All right, commission, I think we're gonna stick with our theme tonight, we're gonna, uh, take a vote, vote to retain the current zoning of this property, uh, as, keep it as SFR2. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it.
All right, commission, we're gonna go through the, I think if Ms. DiDomenico will hit refresh for me, and let's hold our breath and see if anything new has shown up.
Yeah, give us...
Between approximately 4:30 and now. Oh, good, there is more. Cool, let's find out, together. We're on an adventure together tonight. Got you, oh, Mr. Morrow. Um, it is at 2112 Ninth Street. This is a comment of concern, uh, said, well, the property is zoned downtown perimeter, um, and so the comment says, "Parking concerns in the new standards." Um, we could discuss that tonight, or Mr. Morrow, do you want us to, we could reach out and talk about the parking standards if you'd like, or...
Yeah, my biggest concern is...
You wanna come up here? I'll let you, since we're on an adventure together tonight.
So the big concern I have about it's changing the zoning is, you know, I have an existing zoning, as is, central business district. So, I don't wanna run into the issue of, of, you know, like when tornadoes come through, knock your building down, and then you gotta meet the parking requirements, you gotta You got to meet the parking requirements. So that's kind of my biggest concern is, hey, if something comes back, I don't build a, I won't be able to build back there, at least in this, you know, in my spot. So, and I didn't really reach out to the staff, so I'm kind of getting them cold.
We like to tap dance sometimes.
Yeah, okay. All right, let's tap dance.
That was, that's, that's a vacant lot, right?
Well.
Is that across the tire, OK tire?
I'm not sure, because there's, there's a bunch of lots that we own that block. So y'all took, the staff took the whole block and made it perimeter zoning, right?
Right, the whole block is perimeter.
So, you know, my, my thing is, hey, we own, I guess I should have put comments on three or four of those parcels, because we own about three or four of those parcels. So, and so we have two office buildings there. We got 8,000 square foot building and, and another 4,000 square foot building. We don't meet the parking requirements today on that because we use off-street parking. And so my concern is, you know, maybe we put the wrong parcel up there. But we also own the other parcel on the other catty corner of the, of the city lot as well, too. So I don't have a problem with somebody coming back and saying, hey, I want to rezone that portion of the undeveloped property to perimeter parking or perimeter.
Downtown perimeter.
Downtown perimeter. But with the existing zone that we got, if it gets rezoned tonight, now I get hit by a tornado or a fire or something, I'm pretty much out of luck as far as, you know, meeting all the requirements.
So the block today is zoned BC. We are confirming that. It is zoned BC, which of course, in today's standards, Mr. Morrow is correct. There is no parking requirement for properties zoned BC. And we are getting the parking requirements in downtown perimeter pulled up. And it's not just, of course, it's not just for downtown perimeter. It's for those specific land uses. In the downtown area, as you'll recall from our discussions about parking generally, we are looking at parking maximums in some areas. I would love, I'd love for us to talk after the meeting and just kind of get some things squared away, and we can come back, if you don't mind.
No, I don't mind. I just don't want, I just want to be able to, you know, operate our business.
No, 100%. I hear you. So if we can, if you would allow us the opportunity to chat offline, and then we can circle back on this comment.
Okay. I think we all agree with that. So is there a need for a vote here? I don't think so. Okay, thank you. Well, you've got staff's commitment.
Yes, staff's commitment for sure. Anything else new show up?
No.
The Mr. Pons, Ms. DiDomenico are saying no. I guess if you want to see if there's anybody else who, there's folks still in the public.
Since we have wrapped up the portion presented by staff, we would open it up for any public comment, any public comments from anybody about any matter for us tonight. Having heard that, Ms. Kreik?
Yeah, let's wrap this thing up then. Our next steps. So of course, we've got two more meetings, folks. Two more meetings. September 25th, we are still doing map wrap-up and text wrap-up. If there is a property on this map, and I'm, I'm speaking to the choir, but also to the good folks at home and in the audience behind me, if there is a piece of property that you are concerned about, September with the planning commission is about the last shot at it. We have woold this thing around about as much as we can woold it around, and it is time to let this sweet thing free and let Ms. Howard and the rest of the city council tackle it.
You're not done.
Commission, you are excited about this, and Ms. Howard is as well. So we are going to be asking as a Halloween treat for the planning commission to vote, make their recommendation vote on both the, yes, sir.
You say wrap up on September 25, 2024, and then you say map wrap up October 30.
That is in.
I would like to see the map wrap up on September and the vote on October 30. I thought that's what the director.
Oh, totally, yes, that is what we're doing.
We're not going to be taking public comments on October 30.
No, sir, it's just that.
September is the last.
Mm-hmm, it's a recap. I think recap would probably be a better word to use there. This is all the stuff we have done in October. Commission, we are asking you to make a recommendation October 30.
I think, I would make that change in the public.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't.
Totally.
I see mass hysteria coming in on October 30.
Yep, let's, let's make sure we are saying it is a recap and a vote October 30. So again, tell your friends, tell your loved ones, tell your enemies. Map wrap-up, text wrap-up, last shot in September. Yes, sir. Oh, you're just excited.
No, yeah, I'm excited. The September 25th, if we go past two hours, we need to be prepared to stay here, and let's get this settled.
I would agree with that. I would agree. If we have to, we need to get this taken care of, commission. If that is where you are as a body, let's do it.
Sound like a plan. Is that it?
Yes, that's all I have as always. Provide framework comments on framework.tuscaloosa.com. It's your one-stop shop for all things framework. Please review the draft text, review the draft map, submit those comments. Look at the meeting schedule. Mr. Wright, is there anything else?
No, ma'am, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.